Well, it is six o'clock. We'll call our meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
Mike Johnson, would you please lead us in a flag salute?
Absolutely. Please join me. I pledge allegiance, well, there's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Lozey.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. All right. Thank you. Moving along. We have no presentations or proclamations tonight, so we will go to oral comments from the public. If anyone would like to call the number on your screen and address the council about anything that's not on the agenda, please do. And while we're waiting for phone calls, we will go to our consent calendar. We have four items on our consent calendar tonight, including city council minutes, report of disbursements, authorization, application for grant funds, appointing the city manager to be the authorized signer for Proposition 68 Rural Recreation and Tourism Grant Resolution 2022-01, and authorizing the city manager to continue teleconference public meetings for city council and all city committees, commissions, and boards pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 Resolution 2021-32. Does anyone wish to pull any of those items? Seeing nobody.
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Siana.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lozey.
We lost Lozey.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long. Yes. All right. Do we get any phone calls for public comments, Siana?
There was somebody that came on from the public that is just an iPhone. I'm not sure who it is, but I don't see any hands raised.
That might be our applicant, Michael Klein. Do you see that one?
I see Michael Klein on, but I also see an iPhone, and I'm not sure who it is.
I don't know either.
That's me, you guys. It's Michelle.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay. All right. So moving on to our council business, we have the discussion of commission and committee applications for Measure E Committee and for the Planning Commission. So I was able to meet with our applicants, and I am really pleased with Michael Klein. Michael, do you say it kind or king or something else?
Kind.
Okay. Anyway, Michael and I had a nice chat the other day, and I'm really excited to recommend him for the Planning Commissioner seat. I think he's going to do an excellent job, and he's very enthusiastic and has the time to commit, so I'm looking forward to that one. And then the Measure E Oversight Committee. I met with Amanda Phillips because she was the new person that is not on the committee, and she has a lot of potential, but she also understood that we have two applicants who are already on the committee who have been doing a great job, so it's kind of hard to kick them off and say, you know, see you later. So she understood that she is going to continue to be involved, and she's going to check out the Planning Commission to see if she would be a good fit for the alternate position on that one, and also just looking at other ways she can get involved in the city. So at this point, I would like to appoint Michael Klein to the Planning Commission and Martin Morris and Christina Mobley to the Measure E Oversight Committee. Does anybody have any questions or comments or issues?
Great choices. I'm back. I don't know if mine was the only internet that went out momentarily.
Yeah, for a minute.
Yeah, I'm back. But great choices, Mayor.
Well, it's exciting to have some new people interested, and I'm, you know, hoping that we can find a place for Amanda because she was really quite delightful and just very well spoken, and I think she has a lot to offer as far as, I don't know, new vision, but energetic also, and she's been in Fortuna about 10 years now. She just really loves the city, so I'm hoping that we can figure out where she fits in later on.
Does she have any background in business?
I mean, somewhat. She works for the county.
Okay. If it has several vacancies?
I did mention that to her, but I'm not really sure where we are with that. And the other thing that would have to happen there is we would have to have the FBIT board meetings in the evenings if she was involved because she works in Erie. We did. So. Walt has his hand up. Yes.
Mayor Long, thank you very much for reappointing Christina and Martin to the committee. They are very valued members. They do a good job, and we certainly welcome them back. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, does any... I was just going to make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the mayor's selection for the Planning Commission and the Measure E.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and we do have Michael Klein joining us for our meeting real quick tonight. If you guys just want to kind of say, hey, and Michael, you can kind of get a sense of who everyone is by seeing everybody's name tags. So thank you for joining us tonight, so we could get a face with the name. I appreciate it. So, Siana, we have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lozey.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Yes. All right. Welcome aboard, Michael.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Just to run through the upcoming meeting dates, our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be on January 18th at 6:00 PM. Our next Planning Commission will be on January 11th, also at 6:00 PM. Our next Measure E meeting will be on January 19th. That's at 5:30, and our next RONER Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be on January 5th. I just have a couple of items I wanted to report on for my verbal report. I wanted to say that I'm very pleased that we did close escrow on the parcel of land adjacent to Newburg Park for the expansion. That's been a goal of the city for many years, and I was really pleased to be able to work with the RONER Community Recreation and Park District to be able to secure their funding for that purchase and the generous donation and sales price from the ERV Foundation, also the McLean Foundation, and we worked on this with them for a long period of time, and they were very patient.
Well, it is six o'clock. We'll call our meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
Mike Johnson, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Absolutely. Please join me. I pledge allegiance. Well, there's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll calls. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Losi?
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Long?
Here.
All right. Thank you. Moving along, we have no presentations or proclamations tonight, so we will go to oral comments from the public. If anyone would like to call the number on your screen and address the council about anything that's not on the agenda, please do. And while we're waiting for phone calls, we will go to our consent calendar. We have four items on our consent calendar tonight, including city council minutes, report of disbursements, authorization, application for grant funds, appointing the city manager to be the authorized signer for Proposition 68 Rural Recreation and Tourism Grant Resolution 2022-01, and authorizing the city manager to continue teleconference public meetings for city council and all city committees, commissions, and boards pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, Resolution 2021-32. Does anyone wish to pull any of those items? Seeing nobody?
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
We lost Losi.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
All right. Did we get any phone calls for public comments, Siana?
There are some. There was somebody that came on from the public that is just an iPhone. I'm not sure who it is, but I don't see any hands raised.
That might be our applicant, Michael Klein. Michael Kine, do you see that one?
I see Michael Kine on, but I also see an iPhone, and I'm not sure who it is.
I don't know either.
Okay.
That's, that's me, you guys. It's Michelle.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay. All right. So moving on to our council business, we have a discussion of commission and committee applications for Measure E Committee and for the Planning Commission. So I was able to meet with our applicants and I am really pleased with Michael Kine. Michael, do you say it kinder Kane or something else?
Kind.
Fine, okay. Anyway, Michael and I had a nice chat the other day, and I'm really excited to recommend him for the Planning Commissioner seat. I think he's going to do an excellent job, and he's very enthusiastic and, and has the time to commit, so I'm looking forward to that one. And then the Measure E Oversight Committee, I met with Amanda Phillips because she was the new person that is not on the committee, and she has a lot of potential, but she also understood that we have two applicants who are already on the committee who have been doing a great job, so it's kind of hard to kick them off and say, you know, see you later. So she understood that she is going to continue to be involved, and she's going to check out the Planning Commission to see if she would be a good fit for the alternate position on that one, and also just looking at other ways she can get involved in the city. So at this point, I would like to appoint Michael Kine to the Planning Commission and Martin Morris and Christina Mobley to the Measure E Oversight Committee. Does anybody have any questions or comments or issues?
Great choices. I'm, I'm back. I don't know if my, if mine was the only internet that went out momentarily.
For a minute.
Yeah, I'm back. But great choices, Mayor.
Well, it's exciting to have some new people interested, and I'm, you know, hoping that we can find a place for Amanda because she was really quite delightful and just very well spoken, and I think she has a lot to offer as far as, I don't know, new vision, but energetic also, and she's been in Fortuna about 10 years now. She just really loves the city, so I'm hoping that we can figure out where she fits in later on.
Does she have any background in business?
I mean, somewhat. She works for the county.
Okay.
I mean.
If it has several vacancies?
I did mention that to her, but I'm not really sure where we are with that. And the other thing that would have to happen there is we would have to have the FBIT board meetings in the evenings if she was involved because she works in here.
Gotcha.
So. And Walt has his hand up. Yes.
Um, yes, Mayor Long, thank you very much for reappointing Christina and Martin to the E Committee. They are very valued members. They do a good job, and we certainly welcome them back. So, thank you.
You're welcome. So, does any?
I, I was just gonna make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the mayor's selection for the Planning Commission and the Measure E.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we do have Michael Kine joined us for our meeting real quick tonight. If you guys just want to kind of say, hey, and Michael, you can kind of get a sense of who everyone is by seeing everybody's name tags. So thank you for joining us tonight, so we could get a face with the name. I appreciate it. So, Siana, we have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right. Welcome aboard, Michael.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Just to run through the upcoming meeting dates, our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be on January 18th at 6:00 PM. Our next Planning Commission will be on January 11th, also at 6:00 PM. Our next Measure E meeting will be on January 19th. That's at 5:30. And our next RONER Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be on January 5th. I just have a couple of items I wanted to report on for my verbal report. I wanted to say that I'm very pleased that we did close escrow on the parcel of land adjacent to Newburg Park for the expansion. That's been a goal of the city's for many years. And I was really pleased to be able to work with the RONER Community Recreation and Park District to be able to secure their funding for that purchase and the generous donation and sales price from the ERV Foundation, also the McLean Foundation. And we, we worked on this with them for a long period of time, and they were very patient, and they, they really had the same vision for the city to be able to expand the park into Newburg Park. So not only did they agree to sell it to the city at favorable terms, but they also included a number of things that the city wants to do in their environmental document, which will save us a lot of time and effort. And so they, they did the environmental analysis for that. So I'm very pleased. So our next steps on that will be to identify some both short-term steps and then start developing a long-term concept for the improvement for that park. So we're excited to do some things in the short term to make that available to public, some trails and things, and then ultimately see the full development into a concept the city is pleased with. And then the second thing I just wanted to give the council a quick update on the mill site development. We executed the grant agreement with Humboldt County for the Headwaters Grant, and the second part of that is we're working on refining the scope, and I think we're finished with that with the consultant for Plan West. So we're getting ready to continue with that project and, and put those resources from the Headwaters Grant to good use. So that's all I have for my verbal report.
All right. Thank you, Merritt. Anyone have future agenda items that we don't already have on our list?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Um, I would like to suggest a future item, agenda item with the consent of the council for an update on the Police Operations Division since it is the first of the year.
Update on what? I didn't hear you, Mike.
On the Police Operations Division, the POD, and when we can expect the Police Department to be in that building. I really think an update to include the current status, um, realist, and a realistic timeline to include when permits might be obtained, when construction might start, when the chief might be able to plan, moving staff currently in the building to a temporary location, and maybe a date when the move into the newly renovated building might happen. I really think we need to the assigned engineer from Witch Church to provide the best projections that he might have and be available for any questions that the council might have. Um, I've been asked several times from que, from questions from people within the community, and I just don't have the answers for them. Um, but, you know, their, their issue is that the um, project is taking longer and, um, no dates that we, you know, have really talked about. And the longer it takes to complete, the more it's supposedly going to cost the city. And I do understand that the money's been set aside from the CARES Act, but the longer this goes on, the more it, you know, will cost the city. And in addition, I really think that we owe our police employees some answers as to when, you know, this move will, will happen. And, um, so I think i, if we could have some kind of an update to the council from the engineer, from Witch Church and staff, I, I think it's a good way to start the new year.
I don't disagree with you, but I think it's all still a moving target, so I'm not really sure how much of an update we can get, but we will have our city manager check on that.
I've got a future item I'd like to get an update on. And that would, we've got, I, you'd think four or five lots between Penn Street and Spring Street, and what we look, we might be wanting to do with those. And what? I know the one on Penn Street's been empty for like 30 years, and it's been bandied about to be a a pocket park or residential or different things, and just where, where we're at with that as well as the lot on Spring Street and what we might be looking at down the road. You know, resident housing land is an important thing. See what we can do with that.
I know Penn Street where originally there's something tied to it for affordable housing, and I don't really know. We've talked about it several times, like getting somebody to build something, but it just hasn't, hasn't penciled out for anyone, so. In Spring Street, oh, I think it was kind of the same thing, but we'll have to actually dig in and figure out, you know, what the challenges are, why are they still sitting there?
We can certainly bring that back at a future agenda. Be happy to. We've been looking at those lately and thinking about how we can do some reviews, so we'd be happy to bring that back.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, uh, I'd like to hear from the other council people if they would like to get an update on the, on the, uh, POD.
Oh, I think we can get an update, but I don't think we're going to get what you want. We're not going to have a move-in date.
I, I can give you, and I could, Mayor Long, I could just add this into my City Managers' Report. I don't think we need necessarily a separate count, council agenda item. If you want me to just kind of give a brief update now and then?
Yeah, add it to your city council report.
Yeah, so.
Perfect.
As part of my, so, so where that's at is we're expecting to have a building permit early spring. The, the draft plans are kind of in an intermediate state right now. They're working on the engineering details, the HVAC details, the, the layout, and, and I, and I believe I brought the layout and plans set back, but um, I'd be happy to bring back an updated schedule, but the hope is to be able to put it out to bid late, to have a building permit this spring, and then to put it out to bid late spring, early summer, and construction would take, I think we'd have to allow construction to move in for at least a year, um, six months to a year. So it's, it's, that's the best I have, but I can bring back a more comprehensive schedule, but building permit this spring, and the rest will be to, to be determined. And I will just note, I'm also excited to, to think about the reuse of the, the space that the police will be vacating. I think we have some good options for consolidating planning and building, and, and we're, we're excited to, to take a look at that as well.
So do you know in the contract if you're going to get for the PD, if you're going to give how many days, or are you not that far yet?
For the bid?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we've determined that yet.
Oh, so you're not going to say completed in 180 days or 360 by?
The number of working days. I thought you meant for the bids to be returned. No. I don't, I don't think we have that yet.
Okay. So that'll give us a much clearer picture when we can get that number.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Merritt. Anybody else? All right. Moving on to City Council Reports. Mike Johnson?
Well, again, we have not, we did not have a HCOG meeting in December, and between the wife's retirement, Christmas, New Year's, it was a whirlwind time. Had a great trip, and we were on the road for about 10 days, not all the time moving, but out of town. And in that 10 days, I do think there was a couple hours when it didn't rain, and we enjoyed that. But we did have a good time, though. I have to say that. Uh, looking ahead, we do have an HCOG meeting this, this month, and I'm not sure what's on the agenda yet, but we do have a meeting. I know that we also have an evaluation we're going to be doing, and we have a historical commission meeting coming up in January also. And I'll report out on that. I did look, and we have our first transportation, communication, and public works meeting for the League California Cities Policy Committee in February 10th, I believe it is. So I will have a lot of things to report out on in February when we get there. So, thank you.
All right. And Michael C.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have not had any meetings, um, since our last meeting, but, um, I do have a Redwood Energy Authority meeting coming up on the 27th of this month, which I will be missing. So hopefully Mike Johnson is my alternate, so, um, hopefully he can attend. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Jeremy?
So, um, I haven't had any meetings since we last met, but I wanted to give a quick, um, shout out to our Parks and Rec Department for fantastic-looking medians during our Christmas holidays season. Um, they edged and mowed before the Christmas cutouts went up, and thank you to the Women's Auxiliary for wonderful festive Christmas cutouts. Um, was also just getting the, the public a little bit of a uh, shot in the arm about what we've been doing at the Depot Museum. I'm glad to say that we had 132 visitors last month uh, as opposed November 2020, 2020, when we only had 53. So um, numbers pre-COVID were in the 190s to low twos. So we're coming back, and our people are getting out and about. Um, was really excited to see the transit being so utilized again. November of 2020, we had 523 passengers. November 2021, we had 649. Um, hours worked in 2020 was 169 in November, and this last November was 370 hours that we provided services to our citizens. So I really appreciate all the efforts of Fortuna Parks and Rec. Um, also, um, little did I know, without reading my packet here, that um, the skating rink is up and running, and we had 929 skaters in the month of November. So uh, lots of people taking advantage of our public skates and our, our birthday parties. So I'm glad to see that program back up and running. And then finally, just want to say thank you to Cameron and his, um, lead there. I wish I could remember her name. Sorry, Cameron. Um, Apadaka?
Emily Apadaka.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, they had 26, um, kitty campers during the Thanksgiving break, and we'll have another update next month regarding the break, uh, between Christmas and New Year's. So, um, just a great job with the Parks and Rec Department during the last quarter of the month. Um, also wanted to just give you a quick update on FBIT. Um, we're meeting again on the night, on the 13th um, at 2:00 PM, and we'll be going over our, um, job description and our personnel manager on the 13th, so that we can be prepared to offer a part-time position to uh, a potential employee. Uh, we work, uh, we were still waiting on our preliminary report from the auditor, but we expected to have it any day, and we are aiming to actively start recruiting new board members after our next meeting. So um, maybe a little premature to ask you about the other candidate there that, that had applied for Measure E, but at the same time, we want to put that here, that bug in people's ear, that, uh, business owners and people managing businesses and people involved in the business community of Fortuna, we need your support, we need your help, we need your input, and we want to be a strong, uh, a strong ally, support, and advocate for the businesses in Fortuna moving forward in 2022. Last thing I'd like to say is my words for 2022 are peace, compassion, and prosperity, and I pray that for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Tammy?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to say congratulations to Chief Lawn. He is retiring, and they had a nice little lunch for him yesterday at the Fire Hall, um, which I attended and, um, got to congratulate him, and he'll say, he said he'd be around for a little while still. He's not going anywhere. So, um, wish him well on his new adventures of retirement. And then I just wanted to add a little bit to Jeremy's Park. Um, the Hot Shots Youth Basketball Program is getting ready to start, and they have a record number of kids this year, more than they've ever had. So that's going to be a, a big, they have, they're going to be having basketball games going all like from morning to night. There's so many teams. So it's nice to see the youth getting out and doing exercise and getting back involved in their sports again. That's nice to see. That's all I have to report.
All right, Emmy. And speaking of the hot shots, I'm volunteering to do the skills and drills again. So with this record number of kids, I'm not sure how many people I'm going to need to help me, but I think I'm going to need a lot. So, um, it's always fun to teach the little people. It's my favorite. Um, didn't have a regular redact meeting this, um, for December. They said they couldn't get a quorum. I got asked to speak at the Sunrise Rotary on Wednesday, so that's on my calendar, kind of early, but you know, once a year or once every, how often they ask me, I guess it's okay. Um, I am pleased that I did get the presidential appointment from the League California Cities for the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee, so I'll be on that committee again for the next year. So, um, that's all I have to report, I think.
So?
Yes.
Over 400, um, people participating in the hot shots from McKinleyville to Garberville. Good luck.
Who wants basketball drills? Yay. Okay. Um, we do have a closed session tonight, a conference with labor negotiators. Our city negotiator is City Manager Merrick Perry for the employee organizations, Fortuna Police Employees Association, Fortuna Employees Association, and the Unrepresented slash Management Group in accordance with Section 54957.6 of the Government Code. Does anyone have any comments before we adjourn to closed session?
Just one.
Yes.
Congratulations to Tammy Trent, the winner of Holiday Dazzle this year.
Yeah, I forgot to talk. Yours on my list, and I didn't tell you.
Well, thank you. And Jeremy did second in commercial, too.
Hang on, we have that. My mayor ended up picking, um, 2169 Skylark. I think it's Victorine's house, Jody and um, Vicky Victorine. Oh, I can't find Renee's little Susan's our chamber thing today. Did you guys see it? Here we go. Okay. Winners, Tammy, Pineview Drive, if anyone drove down there. And 1944 Brandy Lane, which was the snowman theme. 1300 Vansel Street, which was kind of a weird skeletal kind of thing, some really different. Um, and then I clicked on the wrong thing. That was residential, and then the business winners first was Quimpell Realty Group with their gingerbread house, which tangles is in the back of that building as well. And then Landmark Real Estate, Jeremy, and Cornerstone Realty, which is, um, Kim Brown now. And then I already said the mayor's choice was 2169 Scarlet. So that was a fun little adventure. Um, I hope you guys all drove around with your kids and your family and checked out all the lights, because there were some pretty, pretty good ones, and, um, just thanks to all the sponsors, because we couldn't have these kind of, um, city events if our businesses didn't kick in. Our businesses are overly gen, excuse me, generous, and then we just really appreciate all of you do to make our city fun and exciting and have events for our families to enjoy. So thank you. Thanks, um, Siana. Who brought that up? Jeremy. Thank you, Jeremy, for that reminder. All right. Now, any more comments before we adjourn the closed session?
I actually just got the official number for the basketball kids. It's 362 kids and 42 coaches. Lot of kids and coaches.
Fun.
Don't worry, only three of them are, 300 are coming to see you soon.
That's what I'm afraid of. You ever have, uh, 100 little kids running around, and you've got a whistle, and they've all got a basketball? Oh, my gosh. That's wild and crazy. All right. Motion to adjourn to closed session, anybody?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second to adjourn to closed session. All in favor? I.
Hi.
All right. Siana will get us all situated, and we'll see you all, Walt and Julie and everybody else. Michelle, anybody else who was on our call? Thank you for joining us. See you later.